I will officially call this meeting, January 13th, work session to order. And it is 7:05, I'll get the official satellite time, so we have that for the minute, 7:06. And I'll let the record reflect that all of the town board members are here. We also have a number of members of staff. And we have a number of residents. And we have a scout here, working on citizenship. So, welcome to our scout. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes and would entertain a motion of approval for the minutes.
I'll...
So, I've been moving to second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the minutes will stand approved as written. Thank you, Lisa, as always. Next item is the monthly reports for December. The following departments need to get their monthly reports in. Building, zoning, fire marshal, justice courts, and personnel are the three that we're missing. And we'll look forward to having those in, I'm sure, by week's end. There are no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to our next item, which are guests. And the first guest is Rudy Neufeld. This is a discussion about Abington Place subdivision. And Mr. Cassell, I'll ask if you have any additional comments or intros, please tee those up.
Thank you, Tony. For several months, Rudy Neufeld and I have been meeting, basically being driven by the fact that the board is entertaining a process for incentive zoning to the south of Rudy's property at Abington Place. Mr. Vindel's here this evening, probably to listen to the discussion. It's about right here as well. If you remember, early on, when Abington was preliminarily approved, Mr. Neufeld had smaller lots along the south side of his property of Buddy and Mr. Vindel's. We, as part of the review process, indicated that we didn't know what was going to happen with Mr. Vindel's property, and therefore, we were concerned that he'd have a lot of smaller lots adjacent to property that may have larger lots. And prior to approving the project, you had him revise his plan to larger lots versus the smaller lots. I believe he had nine larger lots along the south property line of Mr. Vindel's property. Since then, Mr. Vindel has proposed a plan for you with smaller lots somewhat equal to what Rudy has in the rest of his tract. So Rudy came back to me and asked if he could meet with you to talk about the idea of going back to the smaller lots originally once proposed along the south boundary line of the property. There were nine lots approved along the south boundary line. He's requesting an additional three, which will, you know, shorten up the size with the lots, giving him three more lots. And that's the discussion at hand. Did I clarify that?
Perfect.
Any other comments?
Maps on the wall that kind of shows...
There is a map on the wall behind you. I'm sorry, I apologize if it's behind you. But it shows in blue the proposed lots versus in black the existing lots, which are somewhat wider. I also have Mr. Vindel's plan just at the bottom of that that shows how they would kind of tie together if Mr. Neufeld were to keep his existing nine lots versus the 12. So, in this case, there was an incentive of $3,250 associated with that particular subdivision. And I'm assuming that he'd be willing to pay that number, if that's what the board is requesting as part of the process.
Let's not get ahead of our blockers.
Yeah, understand.
Yeah, let's not get ahead of our blockers.
But I just want to make that out on the table, so that you can remember what the incentive was.
You have comments on, from the PRC, from the change?
It's really a function of, it'll be the same lots that he has in the rest of the tract. It's, he's not, there's nothing of any physical...
Doesn't do anything to the land.
Or technical change that would occur. The utilities and everything are in place for the nine lots. It would be, probably the difference would bring wise up main line to tie into the sanitary and that type of thing, but nothing of any significance.
You said it was still pending decision by this board, correct?
That's right, and he knows that for Barclay.
Right.
Any legal requirement that we have with this? It would be, oh, absolutely. And that's why he's doing it now, because I think he's anticipating sometime later this year to come in for, that would be the last phase, or the second-to-last phase. He would want to get that resolved with you prior to coming in and asking for that, so that you're on a comfort level as to what, you know, what's going on there.
Did we ever look at a proposal for the south property that had larger lots on the north side that would mirror?
No, we did not.
Okay, so, the first time we looked at a proposal for the Vindel property was what we see there behind Linda, sort of those smaller lots?
Yeah.
On the bottom?
No, it's the trees.
No, on the bottom?
Bottom.
Down here.
The bottom map, yeah.
Get out of your way.
So, the decision, discussion and decision by the board is that, does the board feel inappropriate to bring this up for public hearing, to vet that out for not only the neighborhood, but anyone else that would like to speak for or against the application? And it would be essentially increasing by three additional lots?
Correct.
For what was approved by this board would be for three additional lots. So, the discussion for us is, is that are we willing to do that, or not willing to do that?
I'm fine with a public hearing. And then I'll make a decision after the public hearing.
Yeah, I reserve judgment.
I'm fine with a public hearing.
So, that would be, the next step would be to come in and have a public hearing? And then, obviously, everybody can speak for or against that, and then...
Because we don't go incentive discussion until we...
That is correct.
That's right. And right now, with the incentive in the air, you don't really know what is going to happen.
That's right. That's right. So, next step would be that they would, so the question would be, information meeting or right to the public hearing?
Public hearing, I think. I think it's appropriate for a hearing if we're just talking in terms of increasing three lots.
Yeah, I'm fine with going with the public hearing.
Okay. All right, and we will, Mr. Neufeld will work with staff and tee that up whenever he has the appropriate material plans, et cetera, to bring before the board. Okay? Great. If it's not on the agenda, it won't get discussed.
I was just going to add one comment for the boards on this issue. One of the driving things, last year, beginning of last year, we developed Section 3, and it was too late to have this discussion. So, we did put in five of the 100-foot wide lots. And, not that they're not ever going to sell, but we can't get public interest in them. They're 100 feet wide, 180 feet deep, and people just don't want that size lot if we give an incentive or we'll offer use. They don't want that size lot. So, that's something that told us already all last year, we can't sell a 100-foot wide lot. So, and just so you know, too, the lots, there is room to put four lots where these nine are, four additional. But that would give us a 66, a 68-foot wide lot. And we're going to make them, they're going to range from 80 to 85, which is a little larger than some of the average ones we have at Abington. But it is the south side, it's a little nicer. So, we thought that was a nice blend that would give us a little wider lot, but not so big that it's 100 foot wide. So, I just wanted to add that for your thought.
Okay.
That would be important, I think, for you to raise at the public hearing when you tee up your presentation.
I will. All right. Other questions, board? Other comments, staff?
Not this time.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to our next, move on to our next item.
Thank you.
The next guest is Dr. Robert Falone. See Dr. Falone here for discussion of development of 2146 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. Thank you. Okay, James, if you would, again, add any additional comments to help tee this up for the board?
Thank you, Tony. I've been working with Dr. Falone for several months on what to do with the property that's remaining that he hasn't developed. As you know, the board has given him a pointary final approval for the 6,000 square foot building that he's received, three business approvals for. There's a building to the north where the old Reese House was, that was a 4,000 square foot preliminary approved building. And there was also a 4,000 square foot building that was approved in the back for office space. He came through a while back with the intent of possibly doing an office out front, but the board made him aware of the fact that if that happened, he loses the incentive, and then would just be in compliance with code. So, he's now changed his scheme here. He is looking to do something out front. And then we'll let you explain what you're trying to accomplish, and then we'll talk about the specifics of what the board would have to do for that project.
So, just to reiterate what Jim had said, I mean, what started was, when I first came here, was the Reese property. And then, I acquired the Faris piece in between Reese and Panera. And on the Faris piece, I put the 6,000 square foot building that's up right now. And on the Reese piece, there's the 4,000 right next to the 6,000, and then the office building in the back next to the medical building. During the construction of the 6,000 square foot building, Mr. Trow approached me and wanted to know if I was interested in the back portion of his property, which I then put under contract, and I've been in talks with Goodwill. So, we had come up with a plan, which is, which looks like it, which is number, page number two. So, page two shows the 6,000 square foot building all the way to the right. And then it shows the 4,000 square foot building, which we have the preliminary approval of. And then, in the back, there's the Goodwill building, and then I also could put, there's room to put approximately a 8,000 square foot building in the back. So, I've had talks with Mavis Tire and Dunn Tire, and about putting, going in the back there for that 8,000 square foot building. Because that property back there is already zone general business. And I wouldn't, I think I would need what type of permit for...
A conditional use permit.
A conditional use permit. But, most recently, Jeff Gold, that owns the Buckmans Car Wash, has approached me. And then I was thinking, if I acquired the car wash, I could, I'd have the opportunity of maybe bringing the automotive away from the neighbors and closer to the road.
Where the car wash is.
Where the car wash is. But, so that leads us to page three. So, what I did was kind of superimposed everything. Attached to the 4,000 square foot building, I would put that automotive, let's say, you know, it's a tire, a Dunn tire, or a Mavis. Keeping the car wash the way it is, taking the siding off, making it more brick, more of an elegant building. Kind of keeping in, keeping in tune with what I'm doing with the buildings that I just put up. And, like I said, it's keeping the automotive away from the, from the neighbors.
So, the Dunn, the Dunn tire, what you're proposing, the Dunn tire would be in the, what I'll now call the L shape?
That L-shaped building.
And would that, that entire building be utilized as a Dunn tire?
No, it'd be, there'd still be about 2,400 square feet that would be regular retail.
So, the 24, which is the little, little nub up front, would be retail, and then the bigger portion of the L, you would propose as Dunn tire?
Right.
But where's the car wash, though? That's part of it.
The car wash is still there.
Still separate.
It's still separate. So, it's really a larger piece, if you put that...
By acquiring the car wash, there's a, there's a lot of wasted space between the car wash and my property. So, the car wash pretty much stays the same, it's still operational as a car wash, but it allows me to add on that, that hub, which would be the, you know, the tire store.
Would it all be the same access points?
Yeah, I don't have to go back to the DOC for any more cuts or anything.
What would your plan be, then, for the back property that is currently zoned general business?
Well, I would, I would not put the building and keep the vegetation the way it is. Because right, right now, you can see that there's the, from, on the GB part of the land, the buffer is 100 feet. But on, on my piece, it's 75 feet. So, I would go back and keep the 100 foot as an additional buffer.
So, that would be directly behind the former Perkins property, is that what you're saying?
No, that's on, that's on, oh, on this piece?
Yeah.
Yeah, what happened with that?
That would just be regular retail.
So, the building that's crossed out, is crossed out because you're proposing not to put it down there?
Correct.
But to still utilize it for retail?
Right.
So, the only, only place you're proposing to put a, an automotive service facility is adjacent to the condition, the existing car wash?
Correct.
Now, the other part of that that's intriguing is the fact that the property, well, you approved the 4,000 square foot building, which is also incorporated into that L. But the other port, there's a portion of that property now that's not in the incentive zoning package. It kind of encroaches against the trial property. So, the question would be, if you were to entertain this proposal in some way, would you want to do it yourselves as an incentive, as the portion that is the incentive, with the rest of it just being regular site plan approval? Or would you want to have the planning board do a portion of it? Or would you want to have a joint meeting with the planning board? Right now, obviously, the planning board really has no history or background knowledge of this whole application. So, there would be a little bit of a learning curve for them if you were to bring them into it, but certainly, that, that could be done if you felt that was necessary.
Well, if it came down to the fact that you're going behind a cornerstone, and you have the Buckmans, and that stuff, those businesses, areas are not part of the incentive.
No.
If anything redevelops further down, which you never know, could happen, you'd want the planning board involved.
So, these two buildings here, when they come in, that would come into the planning board for site plan approval. It's this one right here that encroaches, a portion of it encroaches into the trial property that was not part of the original incentive, or the incentive from the Reese property. And then what he's talking about here, this is where the 4,000 square foot building has preliminary approval, that would go away.
Is that dotted line the trial property line?
Yes, yes.
So, we're talking about a very small portion.
And that would all be re-subdivided into the parcel, so you wouldn't have those lines splitting the building.
But the Buckmans is part of, it's not part of the incentive?
No, but the fact that he would take out that 4,000 square foot building now would provide more buffer for the neighbors to the project, which I'm sure they'd be supportive when they approved it.
Right, but do we have any, so I guess walk me through the process then, Jim, if that back property now is no longer, it's still zone general business, correct?
No, no. Here's the medical building that you approved, where they went to 73 feet to the back property line, and of course, we had to go back and relandscaping a portion of it.
I was talking about this.
So, you get over to this area here, now you're in a general business zone.
Right.
It's 100-foot requirement, as he suggested. They do meet the 100-foot setback requirement, the way this is laid out right now. This building being gone now, you can see, if he were to build that building that we've granted preliminary approval to, this area here would be disturbed. And there's a lot of mature trees in that area, too. That would be disturbed, which would open up the buffer now to be more visible. Even looking at this plan here, if we were to do some type of birmingham or something on the end of the parking lot to keep the lights from shining down the hill and that type of thing, that would probably be a benefit to the neighbors as well. But this is the building here that becomes the issue, this is the building here that becomes the issue to you, because it doesn't approach outside of the incentive area.
Right. And when that happens, it seems to me that the planning board should have some...
Well, that...
I think what would happen is, like we do from time to time, is have a joint meeting between town board and planning board. I think before we get there, that's a ways down the path. I think the broader issue, I think, for us is, you know, the concept that Dr. Falone is putting forth, is that, is that, you know, something that we believe is reasonable for the, for the area, you know, the neighborhood and all of that. I think that's their, her first, her first discussion point. And then, and then if it is, then we can talk about the how, and kind of go from there.
And at what point will you receive resident input? The school of hearing then, before...
Well, if we're still including the incentive, which we probably are, our past practice has been to have an informational meeting, get the input, and then if it's, if it's appropriate, then move forward with a formal hearing.
I mean, I'm more comfortable, actually, with that, procedurally.
Yes.
I mean, Dr. Falone, I think you've been very consistent with your being mindful of the neighbors. I think every time you've come in, you've understood that, and I appreciate that. So, I think it's important, though, to get their input, you know, informally first, as you suggested.
I'd agree to go forward with this in the public information meeting.
Okay.
I'm going to reserve judgment on the, on the Mavis or Dunn Tire, whatever, you know, store it will be. And I think we talked about this maybe a year, year and a half ago, and Mavis was a proposal in this area. And I was vocal about not being supportive of a tire repair, auto repair store in this vicinity. And I just don't think it fits in this area. I don't think it's kind of complementary to the other medical building, the restaurants, the other retail stores. So, I mean, if we want to go to a public information meeting, that's, I'm fine with that, but as of right now, I'm, I don't support having the tire store at that location.
And, doctor, any, you've identified the space generally as retail. Any, any sense of the type of retail that you've been exploring? Obviously, I recognize you might be, you know, looking at some things and having some discussions that may be proprietary or confidential, but I think this board would be at least interested in knowing the type, type of businesses that you were looking at.
One that's shown interest is one is a mattress store, and the other one was a restaurant.
Okay.
And like I said, I mean, I couldn't just keep the 4,000 square foot building the way it was preliminarily approved, you know, and, you know, not take the car wash out, leave the car wash, you know, not buy the car wash property, and then go to the planning board with the tire place in the back. I mean, this is just a, you know, it's kind of which one is better.
Well, what I would, what I would say is that I personally would be lobbying pretty strong with the planning board not to, I get the fact that in, in the commercial business zone, that may be a conditional use. But I will tell you that I would, would argue back to the planning board, in relationship to the homes, and in relationship to what we've attempted to do from buffering there, that that may not be a use that we see in that area. So, I just put those cards on the table. I don't believe that that's in the best interests of the town or the residents in that area.
No, and I agree.
So...
I mean, that's why, you know, when, when the option came to, when he came and wanted to sell the car wash, I mean, it gave me the opportunity to take it away from that area and bring it more toward the road. And then, obviously, the garage doors would be facing the car wash, not facing, you know, the restaurant.
Route 250 or, or south to the restaurants.
The garage doors of the...
On the north.
Would be facing the...
On the north end.
The side of the car wash.
So, board, we're comfortable with moving forward for information meeting only, not a, not a formal meeting for approval, but information to get a sense of what surrounding residents and, and other businesses might offer up, either speaking on behalf for, or against, on behalf of the application.
I know the board is always conscious of not spending a lot of money on the applicant's behalf early on, but I think in this particular case, and it's probably not even an issue of spending money, but if the intent is to have garage doors on the site somewhere, no matter where, it might be good for the applicant to take some photographs of other buildings that are similar in nature to this, just so that the board and the applicants and, or the neighbors can get a feel for what it is you'd see. And I don't think he has to go hire an architect or anything like that, but just to get some photographs. If it's going to be a Dunn tire, Dunn tires are generally...
Do you have one in Penfield already?
We have one in Penfield, so at least give a feel for what it would look like.
What about a sound study?
Certainly something we could ask for, yeah.
It's not, it's not, it's probably a little bit early for something like that, but it's probably not unrealistic to ask for something like that. And that's even a function of, you know, witnessing what occurs on the other site and Bay Road. That would be an easy thing to deal with.
That's an issue that, that would come up, for sure.
Yep.
And I think that, you know, you can be proactive in doing the sound study.
And actually, Tony and I did talk to him about that, in terms of one user versus the other, because I think it'd be good to get an inventory of what it is one does versus the other in terms of, because it's a noise issue. It depends on, you know, if you're doing muffler repair versus just putting...
Dunn versus Mavis.
Well, Dunn versus anybody, because it's a situation where you may not create as much noise just putting tires on it, as you might be overhauling an entire muffler system on a town. So, those kind of things would probably be helpful to the board and the neighbors as he moves forward.
So, the only other, the only other thing that I would, that I would offer up, and I think, cause you hit the nail on the head, I mean, certainly, at a public information meetings, we don't advocate spending, you know, thousands of dollars with architect engineers. However, what might be, what might be helpful here is, you know, to take a, you know, copy of the map in that general area today, and, you know, maybe go through and identify, you know, we've got some buildings that are Xed out, one might, that might lead one to believe that that is not going to be part of that. But to clean that up, so that as we do go to a public information meeting, neighbors or other businesses that come in, you know, understand. And then, I think equally important, to have a sense of, you know, what that approximate setback is from the neighborhood to the east, because that's where certainly sensitivity has gone, and where we have, you have, and the town board has, looked to, you know, provide appropriate buffering and things like that for noise control and things. So, I think we can clean this up a little bit and still do that without engaging time with an engineer, but, but also make it a lot clearer than maybe what it might be.
Yeah, you're right, Tony. And then the other part of that, too, is actually get some photographs from the neighbor's perspective, back out towards Route 250. Now that the medical building's in place and some other things are happening with some landscaping, it might be a good perception to see what it is you're really looking at, especially for the board, too, to see what they're looking at from their homes and that type of thing.
Okay. All right, so, board, any other questions or comments? Staff, anything additional that we haven't talked about that would be appropriate to get on the record?
No, I think, like you said, I think if this thing moves forward, we would just have to figure out any process to get through.
And that's, you know, that's, again, something that I think, even though it, one might say that it is a sliver here or there, I still say, you know, to err... might say that it is a sliver here or there, I still say, you know, to err in having both boards be part of the process versus, you know, excluding, excluding someone from the process. So, okay. All right. So, Dr. Filone, you'll work with Mr. Costello and Mr. Valentine, because he'll be brought into that process as well, and we'll look to get something on the docket for a public information meeting.
Okay. We'll sit down with him.
We have to go, because we've got a lot of things coming up in the immediate future, so we'll set a time with you to get together and start processing.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Thank you. Thank you for your time. All right, that will move us to action items. The, and I apologize, I should have mentioned this upfront, so I will, I'll mention it now. Again, I apologize for that. Other action items, the first action item, which was a mowing contract summary and path forward for 2000, summary of 2015, path forward for 2016, that has been withdrawn from the agenda. That will be on the agenda for January 27th. So I apologize, apologize if someone is physically here for that item, that item will not be discussed this evening. That will take us to our second item on the agenda, which is 20 Hilltop Drive, a waiver of local law number one, 2003. This was originally reported in December, and at that time, the board had some discussion. We have the action item to go up and follow up on a couple of items, specifically grandfathering and was and is this particular item pre-existing, non-conforming, or grandfathered. And the answer from our town attorney is no, it is not grandfathered because of the original law that was in place and then the update that was done in 2003. So that, that discussion or that item has been put to rest, that it is not grandfathered in.
What was the original date of the original law?
Right off the top of my head, I don't have that.
The first one was 1962.
Yeah.
The second one was 1981. And 1981 is the one that would have proven the process.
So thank you for historical data, Mr. Costello.
So the vehicle would have been in violation under the prior law as well as...
Under the prior law, any vehicle that had a greater than one ton rating would be considered a commercial vehicle. And so it was just a broad base law that covered everything. After that, we did another law that kind of listed out, and that was the one that he brought up at the last meeting. They showed all the different types of trucks that you can or can't have. It's not just based on the weight anymore, it's based on the type of truck. So it became more specific, but the prior one was based just if it had a one ton vehicle.
But my question was, was it a violation under the prior as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what is the grandfather analysis?
That's what he's saying.
Is that because it was a violation no matter what? Okay.
So since our last, since our last get-together, Mr. Carley, one of the things that we did do was, and I think you received a copy, I forwarded you a copy, that the court date was rescheduled to February 10th at 5:00 PM.
You emailed me, yes, sir.
Yeah, so that you've got, yeah, so that you've got that. So I guess the question that we'll start with is that what if, what if anything, what if anything further have you done since our get-together in December to look at other thoughts, ideas, or provisions in the event that...
I'm out of ideas, to be honest with you. I don't know, you know, where else I can take it. I mean, I don't believe R G and E's going to let me park at the substation. They don't just hand out a substation key to anybody.
Did you ask them?
Did I ask them? I wouldn't even know who to ask.
Or did you ask your employer? Did you ask your employer to ask them?
No, I didn't.
Okay. And no other opportunities from your perspective are available?
Park it at our shop, which is 23 miles from my house, no. At this time of year.
Would you be willing to have that conversation with your, with your employer and R G and E about the possibility of parking it at one of the adjacent, adjacent being either Plank Road or Whitney Road?
I don't think that would happen, only because at one point, we were parking a truck that delivers nitrogen to their sites at one of their places, and that was taken away. Now we've got to park it at our office, I believe.
And was the reason, was the reason because the tank was full of nitrogen?
I actually don't know the reason, so, but I know they were parked there, and they refused not to.
Okay. So my question on the table, would you be willing to at least go back to your employer and have a discussion with R G and E about the possibility of parking the vehicle at one of the substations, either Plank Road or Whitney Road?
I could have my employer ask him, yeah. I could talk to my boss.
So we have, we have one more work, we have one more work session before you have to go to court. And, and, you know, as I take a look, as I take a look at the file, you know, there are, you know, certainly a number of different components, you know, as far as, you know, the complaint log dating back to 2008. And, you know, there are, there is also some supporting documentation, you know, from neighbors and things like that, but the court, the court will be put in a, you know, position to render a decision. And, you know, and one of the things, certainly, this board wants to do is explore all options that we possibly can. You know, again, recognizing, you know, we've got an ordinance and local laws that we have to follow. And if, and if the board just does a blanket, you know, exemption for you, that's essentially, you know, we've got to be able to justify why, you know, why you and why not everyone else that, you know, has similar types of vehicles. And so we would welcome any and all input feedback from you or your employer or from R G and E about what, what some of the options might be and, you know, any other supporting documentation that you might have for that.
Yeah, okay. I'll take it back to my boss and see what we can do from there. That's all I can promise.
And I get it, and, you know, I think it would be helpful is if you could get that in writing, you know, back to this board as well, either yea or nay, so that we had that properly documented for the file.
Do you, do you have coworkers who have the same vehicle?
Yes.
Who park it in their residence?
Yes.
Where do they live?
Oh, well, there's nobody else in Penfield.
Because I did a search, I did a search of every local code in the area, and I've yet to find a municipality that allows it as a residential parking.
A lot of them live south of here. I'm, I'm one of the few that lives up here, which makes me...
So south mainly in another county? Because I searched in Monroe County, in the city of Rochester, you're not allowed to? East Rochester, you're not allowed?
I don't know where all of them live, I'll be honest with you. I know another county.
So to me, it was persuasive that I did a search on my own of the law in each town. You've got, what, 19? I did a general search to see if, where, where could you live and park this vehicle? Nowhere in Monroe County. So that, I just, I'm putting that on the record.
In residential zones, yeah.
In residential, yeah.
Yep.
Because I was curious as to where, you know, are we unique? And apparently, we're not.
Probably not, but like I said, I know one guy lives in Greece. He's got a truck very similar to mine, but I don't know where most of a lot of the owners live. I know a few of them live, like the Avon, Lakeville, Livonia area.
A different county, yeah. So I just, that, that was curious. I actually, actually was surprised.
But I think there are a few, I think there are a few in Monroe County, to be honest with you.
Maybe in violation themselves and not know it.
I just don't know where a lot of them live.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't check addresses.
Okay.
We also have guys who work for the gas, see, I work for an electric and telephone gig, a DB side. We got guys who work for the gas side, and I don't even know a lot of those guys.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's almost like Gary G and E. It's two different companies, electric.
I was just curious if maybe you had a coworker who said, you know, I'm allowed to park it, and I live so-and-so, because I actually was, I said, I was surprised that there's no municipality in Monroe County that permits the vehicle to park that you were parking in your driveway like ours.
I know there's a lot of them out there. I mean, you know, let's be honest, you can drive around, you can see a lot of them in every town, including this one.
Okay. All right. So your action item is you're going to, you're going to reach out to your employer to see what some options they might be able to assist with, and as I said, ideally, we would have that in writing for the file. So I would encourage, I would encourage...
If I have to, and they want me to go with a smaller truck, what's the biggest truck you would allow me to park in my driveway?
Yeah, well, I mean...
Well, if it's a pickup truck, you can do that.
Right.
Or if it's a panel van, you could do that as well.
Right.
There are, there is that list that Tony had pulled out that showed all the various vehicles.
How big of a pickup truck? I mean, you know, you got a three-quarter ton, you got a half-ton, you got a one-ton.
I think you'd have to sit down with us and go through that. I mean, I don't want to put the board in a position trying to figure that out here.
And I don't have that, I don't have that.
Or proactively see what your employer has available, see what, what other, you know, vehicle is available for you, and then compare it and see.
I think that if you came in and saw Mr. Se Vegas, and I'd be happy to be there as the liaison, because I've been here and he hasn't, if you were to come in and see him and sit down with him, I'm sure he would go through that process, whether he'd show you what would be permitted and what wouldn't.
Or a truck, trailer.
Well, whatever, whatever the case may be.
My house isn't set up for a trailer.
Well, we're talking about ways for you to be able to park your...
I understand, and I'm just saying...
I'm trying to help you out.
My driveway's a single-car driveway with a little turnaround. It's not really set up for a trailer, so...
I would say...
I'm just saying for me, that's not an option.
If you can make an appointment just to come in fairly quickly and sit down with us, I'd be happy to sit down with you and Mr. Se Vegas and go through it, and he could give you some direction. There are, there are so many options out there, depending on what, you know, what your needs are, what you can handle versus what you have today.
If I was forced to go with a smaller truck, obviously, I'm not going to be able to carry any of that. A lot of the stuff I'm not going to, that I would need, but if I'm forced into it, I'm forced into it.
There may be some options that serve your needs, we just have to figure out what they are.
Do you have, do you have some availability, you know, during, during the day, either first thing in the morning or end of day, to get together with Mr. Costello and Mr. Se Vegas?
Well, it has to be, I would say normally after four o'clock.
Okay.
As far as...
Excuse me. I leave for work at six o'clock in the morning, so I'm assuming the morning is definitely out.
We could, we could do it four, five o'clock, whatever you want to do, whatever's good for you. We're here, so it's not a big...
Well, these, these guys you're going to be dealing with need their beauty rest, so six o'clock in the morning may not be the best, but they are, they are here, you know, four, five o'clock, so we can, you know, we can assist and at least have the discussion and, and pull the, you know, pull the chart that we have as part of the local law, take that out. And again, that's another, another dimension that you could take a look at, you know, to bring that into compliance.
Well, I know that they, that they have had, you know, like an F-350 with utility box on it, but it's just a little smaller truck, it's shorter. I don't know if you consider something like that, because the utility body's kind of, I got to have a way to lock the stuff up, if you understand what I'm saying.
Sure.
That's why I can't just park it anywhere, because, you know, you're talking, you're probably talking $10,000 worth of equipment, you know, generators, pumps and stuff like that, and my truck saws, and you can't just park it anywhere, because they can pop doors pretty easily.
Sure, sure.
I don't care what you've got, they'll get in it.
Right, right.
We'd be happy to look at options for you, so if you get a chance to get in.
Yeah, Kaz, if you wouldn't mind, if you have a business card, at least give, give Mr., Mr. Carley a, you know, a contact number, we can, you know, set up something here. And again, we next meet on the 27th work session. Next week is legislative session, but the next opportunity is the 27th. So if you could make arrangements to meet with Jim and Andy prior to the 27th, that would be great.
Excuse me, okay, I'm sorry, I got laryngitis.
Not a problem. A lot of that going, a lot of that going around.
We and I have been to the doctor, just laryngitis. No strep, no nothing, just laryngitis.
A lot of people wish I would get that.
Yeah, I'd like it when my wife gets it.
Off the record, of course.
She's loving it now. My wife's loving it now.
Okay. So set up a time with them, and then let's get back.
In case anybody actually looked at the copies you made last time and the signatures, I was missing one.
Yes.
Would you now have it?
Okay.
I could not catch them home, and it took me several more attempts to get to finally catch them at home. It's number 25, I do have that signature.
Okay. All right, very good.
I don't know if it means anything, but...
Give it to Kaz when you meet him or now, or whenever you prefer.
Pardon me?
You can give it to Kaz, Jim, now, or when you meet with him, it's fine, too.
You can get a copy of that.
Copy of this?
Yeah, get an updated copy to Jim when you meet with Jim.
Whatever. Take it now if you want a copy of it.
We'll, we'll catch it when, when you come in and meet with Andy and Kaz.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right.
All right, we'll now shift gears from law and finance into public works.
Something easy.
We have, we have a hold harmless fence in Sewer Easement at 9 Grace Marie Drive, and Mr. Valentine will help tee this up for us.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Mr....
Chesney.
Came to the town, he's looking to put up a fence on his properties. He provided a letter of intent on the top, and then put some graphics together. Like to put a fence in his front yard. So first and foremost, it's in a sanitary sewer easement, which necessitate a hold harmless agreement. That's why he's here this evening to speak with the board. He's also looking at putting in a four-foot decorative wrought iron, aluminum-looking fence in the front, would also necessitate a variance from the zoning board, because three, four foot in the front yard necessitates a variance from them. But obviously, he's here before the board tonight to know if he can put it in the sanitary sewer easement. If he doesn't get it from here, he'd move it back, and then may or may not need a, you know, variance for it.
A variance for the zoning board.
So he provided some of the pictures, and I think the last one I put in there, I just kind of took a Google Street View, it kind of showed the whole cross-section on the back, and obviously, you can see the landscaping he has, and obviously, with the landscaping where it is, is why he's looking to put his fence out and around it, which puts it in the sanitary sewer easement. So we did discuss it at PRC. PRC's discussion, obviously, we just wouldn't want to see it under the top of manholes themselves. Obviously, we need to get into those and access them. I explained to Mr. Vasile, you know, the need, if we were ready to dig up the pipe, that's what the hold harmless agreement is for, that basically says we would remove the fence, it'd be his responsibility or any in-future...
Any expenses associated with that.
...to replace it at his cost, you know, being in that easement location.
Are you aware, are there any other fences in the neighborhood that are in the easement already? Has this been...
I haven't seen a fence in the new places.
I drove around, I haven't seen any in the front yard. There are many in the side and backyard, but I haven't seen any in the front yard as of yet.
Because we can make no representation, of course, as to what the zoning board may, may decide or not.
Yeah, I think as far as the easement goes, I mean, as long as the homeowner understands, fully understands that if there's a problem, the fence needs to come down to address the problem.
Oh, I do.
But as far as...
No problem.
You know, the zoning board and the actual issue of the fence in the front yard of the property, I don't think that's really ours to discuss, for us to make a judgment on.
I mean, as long as the board is okay with it being in the sanitary sewer easement.
Can I see those again, please?
Yeah, I mean, we consistently grant these types of waivers with respect to the easement without making any representation that you're going to be approved by the zoning board.
What is the purpose of the fence?
Actually, the purpose is, the first purpose is to make my home more beautiful, of course, because I'm European, and we have like a little, it makes the house a little better. And then the second one is, my daughter got married, and my aunt's going to get married, so we're going to have grandkids. And from what you can see in our home, our front yard is our heaven, not a backyard. So I want to put the fence so the kids, the great kids don't run out and get run over by a car. And the third one is, I've been there for 13 years, and every year, the dears keep eating my flowers and my roses. I don't know if you guys have ever heard anybody, I put plastic bags, I put pie plates to make noise, and nothing stops them. So I should have come up with this a couple of years ago, but over the years, I have some other people. I should have come here, of course, and they told me, no, they don't let you in, it's a lot. Everybody told me bad things about you guys, not you guys, the board. Everybody told me bad things about you guys, not you guys, the board. I say, I'm just gonna go and see what the people tell me. Everybody's so nice, they explain to me everything.
You're gonna gate the driveway as well?
Yeah, just for decorated purposes, yeah, to make it look nicer.
Okay, all right. So board, you're, you know, again, I think Councilwoman Metzler kinda hit the nail on the head, is, is that we have, in the past, granted harm, harm, whole harmless agreements with the idea that if it needed to come down, it was the expense of the property order to do that. However, we're not here to approve the fence.
Sure, yeah.
That is a, that is an action by the zoning board of appeals. So from that end of things, that would be, that would be the next, the next step in the process.
But you guys are okay with it?
Well, we're, we're okay if it's...
Not approving, it's just...
We're okay if they're okay. They're the ones that would approve or not approve.
Yeah.
I mean, I will, I will say, there's not many fences in the front yard. I mean, if you drive around the town, there's not many...
Well, but even, there's not many in any town, that's kinda unique.
Yeah, that's right.
Other people gonna start that.
So, I mean...
But this is not like a bad, you know, like a keeping people out, and just to make the yard better, and keep my grandkids safer, and protect my flowers, too.
And in fact, we don't even need to know anything about the fence, 'cause we, we have no say in that. It's just a matter of...
The sewer easement.
The easement, no.
So, yeah.
As long as the guy can get into the sewer, there's trouble.
Oh, yeah, sure.
We'll send them to the zoning board, but then if the board approves it, we'll prepare a resolution for a whole harmless agreement authorization.
Right.
Please make it clear, yeah, please make it clear that this board is, is not okaying the fence.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want any misunderstanding. We're okaying the easement portion of it.
If it's approved, it can be done that easy.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, it sounds very nice. The easement is okay, so then we go to the other board. I love democracy.
It's a wonderful thing.
I mean, seriously, I'm just taking this, I thought of this for months and months, and this is like something serious, that actually gonna make even the street look better. I'm actually surprised how more people don't come up with this. 'Cause it makes your home safer, it makes your home, your, your yard, most of the people don't think about the yards or the grandkids.
Maybe they figure out how to keep the deer out.
Even if you have puppies, I asked the people in the office, I said, maybe I should say I'm doing it for the dogs, because in this country, dogs have the right way on everything.
Sure.
So I said, let's go to the grandkids first.
All right.
Because, you know, if they play out, it's, it's easier if you close the doors, which I understand all this stuff. I can take it down anytime, the fence, you know, it's no big deal.
Sure.
I understand all this stuff, so.
Okay.
But very impressed with all the explanations, and that's why I put my good clothes today. They told me, you don't have to dress up.
Very good.
Taking it seriously. And I do know, there's nobody that has fence with some surprise, in any town on the front.
Well, because typically, it's not in the zoning ordinance, hence why you would have to go to the zoning board of appeal.
I see some on the paper, though, you can put something with about three feet.
Right.
Without...
Yep.
So this, the thing we do not, it's about the easement, and then the one foot, 'cause three feet is still good, but I think the deer is gonna look at it and laugh at me. It's not gonna keep us out of your flowers. I think with four feet, might be a little...
I, I will, I'll just share with you that we have a four-foot fence in our backyard and a regular, a regular basis. My wife is yelling at me because the deer are eating her flowers, so somehow, I get dragged into this.
Did you hear that, sweetie?
But just, just don't be surprised if your flowers are still being mowed down.
Actually, the most important thing is like, like I said, like the grandkids, and it makes the house look really nice, the yard. That's my stuff, so.
Okay.
Because I really take pride on that stuff.
Very good. Well, thank you. We appreciate you coming in, and thank you for taking the time, and...
Well, of course.
And good luck with your, with your next step.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Beautiful.
Great. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Wow, I'm impressed. Because over the years, they've told you so many things. You go to one border, and the other boy says, no, they're people, just tell them what you wanna do, and they'll fix it.
And you go from there, so.
You're on from your best, every day, sir.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna give the interview, okay?
Well, we'll, we'll, thank you. Thank you very much.
You all sitting here?
Yep, you're all good. You're all good. He'll, he'll follow up with a letter.
On the other side.
Oh, of course.
Okay, stop, and then we'll get him to...
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you, too. We'll move on to grade and fill two ponds at 2735 Penfield Road. And Mr. Valentine, you, gentlemen, grab a seat, pull it around. All right, who's gonna, who's gonna kick this off? Mr. Valentine?
Kick it off again. We have with us this evening, Mr. De Prima, Mr. Schultz is engineer. Mr. De Prima came before us, excuse me, before the planning board, proposing subdivision for his property. And while we're reviewing his property, had some survey work done, first and foremost, showing that he had some ponds on his property that he had not obtained grade and fill permits for. So that's first and foremost, while he's here tonight, is to get his grade and fill permit. As you know, we usually do things 50 yards and under, we're a little bit over that. Second item, notifying, or the survey indicated that they were on the neighboring properties. So the planning board obviously wanted that remediated, told them either he needed to get an easement, buy the property next door, fill them in, at least the portions on the neighboring parcels. I believe he's working on modifications to redesigning, you know, filling those pieces in, resolving that portion of it. But let's see, he's here this evening to talk about his grade and fill permits for the ponds. I think some of them have an aerial photo on it, and the apologies, the one is newest, and that's kinda what brought it to our, our attention. That one, you can kinda see where it's being dug behind his house on that picture, so all you can see is some earth moving, you don't see the actual pond existing, 'cause it just happened, it was just a fall.
Yeah.
And then the other one, obviously, you know, was there a little bit before that. So we're just trying to bring him into compliance before he moves ahead with his planning board application. Some type will also need to be before this board. He's talking about a road length that's longer than 1,100 feet on his property. I know it was not on this evening's agenda, but just cued it up that it may be back before this board to talk about the road length as he moves forward with his application, if he decides to, to do so.
But tonight, we're just dealing with the ponds.
Tonight's just the grade and fill permit.
Grade and fill.
Is what we had advertised, is the two ponds, so he already came in, I do have his, his application form he submitted, I believe I already dropped a check for it, so we have all this, this middle information. Particularly, we look at, you know, ponds, how they're gonna impact the drainage runoff in the neighborhood. These are pretty isolated, there's, you know, he's standing on the top of the hill, I'm surprised they hold water at some points, you know, but it doesn't appear that it's impacting the neighbor. He has a sizable piece of property, so it's not altering drainage in the area or flow to or from his property. But it is a matter that, you know, he needs to get cleaned up and make sure he has proper permits for, for having it.
Okay.
There's no, there's no, like, DEC issues with this, is it? I mean, it looks like it's just kind of there.
Yeah, we have a drainage way, we just cleaned recently, which is down by the road entrance, where Mr. De Prima had come through his property, went through Baccolo's property, he's cleaning part of the drainage way through there, all the way out to County Line Road. So we cleaned out down here, there's some lower wet areas down there, but I can't say he's up on the top of the hill, there's no, no wetlands in that area. And actually, the field up back has been farming for many years. A lot of crops. Mr. De Prima bought the property, Jason Dambres, he owned the skinny piece on the left, now he's bought both pieces, and this is the piece that he's looking at developing with a private drive and some larger estate lot problems on it.
Which, which pond, which pond was on private property? The smaller, or the larger, or both?
Both ours slightly.
Okay.
And as you can kinda see, the tree line, that's, well, previous to Mr. Supervisor, kinda, the tree line kinda follows along and then kinda angles in.
Mm-hmm.
So I think without survey out in the field, I can see how you kinda assume the tree line is kinda the property line and get a little...
And has, and has the adjacent, has the adjacent owner or owners been notified of that?
Yes, they were. They came to the public hearing. Obviously, they did have some concerns about improvements on their property, and that's why we encouraged Mr. De Prima to work with them to rectify that, I assume.
Yeah. Had a long conversation with Matt through, after the meeting, and basically said, whatever you'd like us to do, we would do. Certainly, Mr. De Prima would be willing to purchase a piece of the property, or purchase an easement, or, or fill in that portion. Got it. But we need to get this cleaned up first before we can do any more earthwork out there.
So we just had, these are some outstanding issues. So the planning board basically said, get this resolved before coming back for any further application.
And, and just following up on Mr. Moore's comment, was a permit required by DEC? I know that, well, you know, I think his question was, was there any violation of DEC, but no permits were required by DEC. Okay.
No, it just fall under our grading fill permit process.
All right. And, and so, you know, what I would say is, is that, you know, before we get out and starting to do, you know, any more fill and grade, let's make sure that we have that review and approval by the, the planning board, and then, you know, before we get out and start, you know, working to a plan that hasn't been approved.
Absolutely.
Because that, that, it's in itself is key overall. Okay. Mark, any need for any letter, any letter of credit associated with this?
Man, I think the ponds exist at this point in time.
Okay.
You know, we might've looked at something for erosion control, we'll, you know, monitor if they're filling it back in, but I'd say they're isolated, you know, they're not connected to any stream or other drainage corridor, you know, so if there is any silitation, it's either into the pond or onto his property, so I don't see any impact to either drainage way or wetland or anything nearby.
Okay. All right. Board, other questions or comments? Staff, other, other comments? Any information that was not put on the record that we believe needs to be on the record? Okay. All right. We'll put a letter together, get that out to Mr. De Prima, so he has that for his files. When is the application coming for planning board?
It was a sketch plan, so they came in for sketch, and basically, the planning board had their comments back to them, I believe, you know, the work on those, but this was kinda the one outstanding item, originally would've been on your earlier meeting, but that was obviously the organizational meeting for the board.
Yep.
Earlier in the month, so that's why we're kinda into January, now that, once they get this resolved, if they wanna pursue the project, we'll go ahead with that, and we'll have to come back and talk about the length of the road, the design criteria.
And the informal meeting with the planning board went quite well, it was all received other than this issue, so. And, and I know it's not part of the grading, so what are the total number of units or lots that are being proposed?
I think it's nine.
Is it nine? Nine, nine total?
Yep.
Including, including existing?
No, I think ten, including the...
The existing houses.
The existing house.
Yeah, so.
And then they're all, at least as Richard proposed, above the two acres, they're meeting the zoning requirements, they're two-plus acre, they call them estate lots, but they be subject to...
Yeah. Okay. All right. You'll prepare a letter and get it out to Mr. Prima, so he has that, so as he's continuing to make his applications to the planning board.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we'll move on to Villas of East Hampton. This was a held item, and was brought back up for discussion, and so I'll just take a 30-second or less quick summary. Originally, this came in to the board. Currently, the, the project sits on a private drive, the private, the homeowners association asked the town to consider taking dedication of that. I know the board, and a couple of meetings that we had, raised some concerns about some issues around setbacks and, you know, impacts of plow and snow and, you know, damage to property, buildings, landscaping and things like that. And I think Mr. Valentine told us that they went out and actually did some core samples to verify condition of road according to town specifications. And I think we're at a point now to bring this up for further discussion and, and finalization one way or another. So I would just ask Mr. Valentine, anything more different since the last time we spoke about this, that you believe is appropriate for the...
I'd say I don't think we have any additional... We have the list of, you know, PRC and DPW's concerns, mostly around the setbacks and the proximities of the homes to the, to the road. Mr. Walker did the core samples, it appears that the road was built to town spec, so I don't think that's the concern. Staff's concern was just the proximity of the structures and the buildings. There are portions of the road, you know, that aren't built to town standard, or the bridging areas, so those could be rectified. But I think just the proximity of the, the buildings to the corners, modifications that would be necessary to get a 60-foot right-of-way through there, would necessitate taking pieces of people's property and, you know, cutting off corners as they would project into the right-of-way. We would end up taking the storm sewer system, which currently is not ours, that we didn't inspect originally, we could, you know, televise it, and I think we actually had the crews go out there, they did the sanitary, we, we take the sanitary, and haven't had issues with his construction, but those are kind of a major...
In all instances where, in order to have the 60-foot right-of-way, we would have to do the takings, have those homeowners been just...
We haven't been taken it that far. If it wasn't a consideration of, of the board, you know, to go to that length, I'm, I'm just looking at aerial photo and just overlaying it, we'd have to, he'd have to go out and provide us back an accurate survey, show where the 60-foot will fall, how those properties impact.
Just as an estimation, how many, how many properties do you think?
Mostly the, the corner, I mean, it's very close on all of them, but it's mostly the corner parcels that kinda jut out on it, but as you go around, it's bean-shaped, you know, and at least you're going under a half dozen on that. And we brought that, you know, question up originally, is, a lot of times, if you have a mortgage and you're carving off portions of your property, the bank often isn't too happy about you giving away or selling pieces of your property, basically what they've had the mortgage on, that's their, you know, what your equity is.
And I know you've had several conversations with the residents in the area, and the consensus is still that they are in favor of moving towards a...
Residents are still in favor. There's been a change of the guard, so to speak, as there is on HOAs, you know, in, in last November, the whole board got reelected. And we're having our first meeting next Tuesday with a, with a new board, that everybody still wants to, wants, would like me to pursue it, if, you know, if it's viable, you know? And so I'll have, hopefully I get some further action going. It's been a little slow the last couple of months with the new board and people getting used to what they're doing, but, but they're still very interested in doing something, the residences are in general, yes. I get asked quite a bit what's going on, so.
Mark, can you snapshot again what currently are DPW's concerns about with this?
Just the proximity of the, the structures, so the actual buildings, typically you have a 60 foot right of way and then you have a 35, I mean, our standard is 50 foot from the right of way. Many of these would be zero setback or negative setback. So, you know, under Town Law 278, we've gone down to like a 35 foot front setback on it. These would basically be zero or some instances, less than that.
Very much than that.
Very tight through there.
Yeah.
Obviously them plowing, we have large vehicles that are moving through there, moving snow quickly. It'll be throwing snow up on their landscape, possibly up to the buildings. You know, and then I'd say there's some impacts of the, the bridging, there's some brick pavers that are in that, need to be removed and replaced. They said they would be willing to do that, but I think the two biggest things is plowing and then actually acquiring a 60 foot right of way through there, we would have to take, you know, part of people's properties in order to establish that.
Has there, has there been, I don't recall anything recent since I've been on the board in an instance like this, but what precedent or what have we done in the past when it comes to actually expanding the right of way into people's properties?
I think one of the last conversations that, most recent conversations that, that we've had, we had one in Beacon Hills. We had, had it in Beacon Hills, it was a private drive. I think there were a couple of, a couple of items there. One, in, in many cases, if not all cases through there, the road wasn't, didn't have the depth and it didn't have the, you know, the road width and, and things like that. And I think we had an engineer that came in that proposed some alternatives about bringing it up to speed and, and I think this board essentially said that it was not to spec and, and some of the areas from a setback standpoint were tight and so we denied that request. The only other one that comes to my mind is Jomanda Way, where that one, you know, large lots, East Penfield, and they had sufficient land to go through.
They just had to bring the road up to spec.
And they brought the road up to spec and that, that is a, I won't call it a special dish or put it, that area, that road work that was done to bring it up to speed is being borne by the property owners over a period of time and with no, with no other taxpayer dollars invested.
Are there any other town roads that DPW is responsible for that ha, that are this tight?
We have roads that are skinnier, you know, off of Creek.
I'm talking about structure to?
Of Creek Street. I don't think we have any other that are, we have, skinny roads are close, but I don't think we have any houses that is close.
That's the thing, yeah.
We've bred in, you know, under Town Law 278, we can cluster, I think we've gone down to 30 or 35 foot front setback off of a right of way. But I said, these would be at zero. So basically, most of these structures would be right on the, the setback. So basically the right of way would be their entire front yard, up to the face and, didn't get down to the detail of knowing it's either or not, but as long as a 60 foot right of way through there would be basically from building to building down through most of this. So I don't believe we have any place else that's publicly dedicated.
That falls in a similar situation.
We could take some pictures and take a stakeout and identify how far from the building the actual right of way should be.
Doesn't mean they don't have buildings, but there's, people have vehicles outside their buildings, there can be people outside their buildings.
And those, in those areas where you can see the layout, they, they never parked their vehicles, we're, we're talking for the setbacks or?
Can you walk out your front door?
No, there, there, there's a sidewalk coming out and they, they go, they park around the side. These are townhouses that are built in a quad with, everybody's got an end unit and the garages are in the middle. So the vehicle traffic is towards the center of the buildings. It's not, you know, it's, it's a unique design.
And there's no door and you enter through your garage door only?
Your garage door, but you got a front door, but then it's got a sidewalk that comes around and goes back to you by your garage, you know? So, and the driveway needs to be left open for other residents, because the driveway serves four residences, you know? So, and, so parking in the driveway, I mean, you know, it's too wide, it's very unusual for anybody to do that. So, but it's a little bit different design, you know, in, in there.
Winters are challenging with delivery trucks, mail trucks, all the other vehicles that can be on a roadway when our guys are trying to plow.
A few of the residents asked, as I brought up the, the problem with the possibly plowing and, and, and believe me, it's, it doesn't make much, any difference to me in our develop, our developing whether it goes one way or the other, but a couple of them asked, more than one asked, what would they take dedication of the road if we still responsible for the plowing, you know?
I did speak with the DPW about that and basically if we own the road, we're going to plow it because it ultimately falls back to us.
Okay.
If the, if the private contractor didn't show up that day and the residents call, say, hey, you didn't plow your road.
Yeah.
We're kind of on the hook.
It's hard to kind of separate the two from.
Yeah, we're kind of on the hook.
But I did have a conversation with the DPW after you brought that up.
I mean, I, I kind of have mixed emotions on this issue. I, I can see, you know, the value to the residents of, you know, a public road, but then I'm not, and maybe I'm wrong, I could be wrong on this, but I'm, I'm not convinced that the residents understand or would be concerned that when the road goes public, it's completely different from what it is right now. Anybody can go on that road, anybody can drive on the road, anybody can walk on the road, anybody can, you know, it's, it's a public road at that point, park their car on the road, you know, do those type of things. And then the plowing, not only is, is there a noise concern with the plowing of one of our trucks, town trucks going through, being so close and compacted with the, you know, the townhomes near the road, I think that could be something that they're not necessarily aware of right now. But also with the plow shooting the snow, and I know we've discussed this before, plow shooting the snow, with that, you know, is the sand and all the materials that are, that are product that goes down on the road, goes on the grass, goes on the shrubbery, and in the spring, all of that, you know, could be dead or could be very brown, that they may not be experiencing today. You know, plus the right of way that, that goes with it. So I think there, there are multiple issues involved that people just may not have their arms around because they haven't been accustomed to it, you know, because it's been a private road for, forever, since they moved in.
And I agree with you. The other flip side of that is I would say, just from our experience or our sales, I would say 95% of the people are coming from public roads, you know, moving in there. You know, they're, they're all empty nesters, you know, and, and so they were coming from areas where they had the town plow the roads and maintain the roads in there. So they're, I think most of them are familiar, they could forget, like you said, you know?
Well, or the flipside, the devil's, the flip side of that is if they're coming from a public road already within the town, it's not going to be the same as that public road they're coming from.
It could very well be, you know?
Andy's point is, okay, you moved from Penfield Road to the Villas and you're expecting when the plow comes down that there's not going to be stuff thrown on your, on your window, that your blue box is not going to come flying into your window.
Yeah.
And that could very well happen. They'd go a long way if a truck clips a blue box, that your mailbox is not going to be, you know, that, so to say they're used to a public road, I don't really buy that because this is different. And that's why, I think that's why we're distinguishing it.
Well, and, and, you know, I can understand their comment about living on a, on a public road, I can appreciate that, but having everything so compacted that I just envision in the springtime, this brown strip going right down everybody's yard and their plants and things like that, just with the salt and the sand and the muck being, you know, shot up from the plows that, that, you know, plows do when they remove this, you know, stuff from the roads to clear the roads, that it's going to be a shock when, you know, everything is just not what they thought it was going to be.
And believe me.
And I hate for that to happen.
Believe me, there's going to be.
Right, they don't want to set them up.
No, believe me, there's going to be a nightmare for the town. I'd rather go back to the HOA and say, yeah, it doesn't look that good. You know, I mean, I mean, I have no problem doing that either, you know, so.
Well, I've, I've been trying, I've been trying now over the last few meetings to find that silver lining where it really would be beneficial to the residents. I have concerns from the safety standpoint, the liability standpoint and the logistical standpoint from the town's perspective. And at the same time, I agree 100% with Andy, which is, I don't know if the residents really understand what they're asking for in the sense that there will be no setbacks, that there's going to be some takings in instances where, you know, and, and I don't know if the next step is to have some form of a conversation where maybe Ronnie or someone else from DPW can actually sit down and talk about some of the logistical problems or where you actually map out or stake out a street and show them that this is no longer your property or this, I mean, until I think they have that stark realization of what really is being discussed, I just don't know if they just, oh, well, we don't have to pay for the plow anymore, the town plows. It's a lot different than that. And after all of that, if they still come back and say, we want to have a town plow, you know, I'm, I'm still on the fence at that point, but at least they understand that, you know, all the ramifications and, and the problems may come with it. So, you know, I defer to you, Tony. I don't know what the next step is as far as maybe putting together some form of a, maybe even having a plow sit on the street. I, I have no idea if they really understand how big the plow is compared to the size of the street. I really don't know. I mean, it looks different when it's going down Baird Road from 75 feet back on your front door as opposed to where these residents are going to be looking at a town plow. So I don't know how you, what the next step is.
I, I think you're right. I think that what needs to happen is we probably have to have some interaction, at least get some information about how close we will be to their houses so they have a perception, an understanding of what that will be. Because the other, somebody brought up the other issue and I think you're right on target with these banks, they may not want to see takings in this order because it diminishes the value of the land they've already got mortgages on. So, I mean, that's something the property owners have to think about as well as they're going through this process. But I do agree, I think we, we may need to have some interaction with that association just to let them understand all, all the issues that are at hand here.
You know, so certainly if, if this were, if this were being built today, you know, we would be looking, we'd be looking to have greater setbacks. Certainly we would, would have had inspections on storm sewers. I get the fact that the road is up to snuff. You know, the biggest, the biggest concern that I have is, is that, you know, this is really more of a self-created hardship at, at the time because very easily, I guess I, I say this, you know, obviously, you know, you got to take into fact, all the factors, but, you know, maybe there have been more setbacks, you wouldn't have issues where buildings might be in the right of way, you know, so the question comes up about variances and all those other types of things. And I think that for some similar arguments that, that we had with that one roadway within Beacon Hills, putting aside the fact that the road was up to town, was not up to town specs, just the closeness of the right of way and everything else, you know, I, I would, I would tend to say, I'm certainly willing to have conversation with the association, but what I'll, what I'll say is, is that I would tend not to support accepting dedication of not only the roadway, but the storm, stormwater sewers for this development.
Yeah, I think, I think my, my term is not so much self-created as foreseeable. When this property was developed, all of this was foreseeable. And I think we have to weigh in, weigh that into consideration that, you know, it's, it was an option to have, be a public road at one point in time. And yet that was, that was, a conscious decision was made for this to be a private road and to have all the benefits of developing a private road be, you know, had at that time. And now I think it's just, it's, it's somewhat of an improbable change based upon the different, the challenges. And I certainly feel like we have a duty to support our DPW and not set them up in addition to not set, setting up the residents for damage.
Yeah, you are right, the density certainly would be a lot different if it were undedicated.
So if it was built as a dedicated road with the typical standard setbacks, you may have had.
X number of lots less, or units less.
Number of units. So obviously it was planned that way with the setbacks there were to achieve the look and the density and what it is, but that's what makes it, it's the neighborhood that it's in and it's obviously attractive to the residents that are there. But as Councilman Natsir stated, that was obviously decided and was very much thought out to build it this way, to make it marketable and make it what the community is, but that comes with, I'm saying a cost, but that comes with.
Consequences.
Yeah.
So Board, what additional information might you like that, that either Mr. Valentine or myself or anybody else might gather for you before you make your final decision?
I, I, I mean, my initial reaction has not changed. I mean, I'm not in favor of this, I don't, I'm not in favor of this. But again, if, if the residents, there is consensus or they do want to move forward with this, the only thing I'd be interested in hearing is if they are fully aware of what, you know, ramifications there are. I mean, it's easy enough to deny, but I would just be interested to know if they really fully understand why we're denying. I mean, we can nice, we can, we can let them know in a letter, but that may not really capture the full essence of what we're trying to, to say. So, you know, if we wanted to tie this up tonight, that's fine, but if, if, you know, we do want to hear, if the residents do want to actually find out, the new board, you know, newly elected board actually wants to sit down or meet out on the street with one of the highway guys some afternoon, just to kind of get a sense of how it would work and what they're, you know, looking at as far as some of the, the right of ways, then, then I wouldn't be opposed to that either.
How about, we got, got a meeting, they got a meeting on Tuesday morning, the new board, and how about if I grab some of the survey maps that I got showing the properties, showing where the setback lines would come, you know? And, and then bring some of those concerns up with the snow plowing and different things and saying, if we're, if the board, if this board here is going to consider anything, they want to make sure that there's full awareness of any negatives that could come from it because we don't want you complaining to the town about something that could possibly happen that we're going to try to educate you on right now and make sure that, that, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to force feed this or anything, just if it's not right, it's not right, you know? And, but if you're, if you're comfortable with getting feedback from the residents before you make your final decision, I will put a proposal, a presentation together for them on, for Tuesday and, and say, we're going to need this and this, this is some of the problems, the setbacks, you know, here's a map, some of the survey maps, here's where the right of way is going to come, you know, and, and explain some of this to them, you know? And like I said earlier, it's, either way, it doesn't make any difference to me, but once I'm out, once I'm done developing, I'm done. We are not having problems selling them because it's not dedicated, you know? So it's not a, there's none, none of that kind of issue going on. And so I, I just want everybody to be comfortable here and I want everybody to be comfortable there. If it's, you know, and it's sort of elected me to, to do this, you know, and so, and I, but I don't, I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable.
Well, you certainly represented them well throughout the process, so it's, it's certainly not a matter of.
If that's okay with you, I'll do something like that and, and get back to Mark or Tony and somebody with that feedback and maybe when you, I could, shown all that presentation, maybe they'll say, well, maybe we don't want it.
Right. I would need a higher comfort level, I think, from our Public Works Department.
Yeah.
Not that I, not that it's necessarily 100% their call, but we do have to take into consideration their concerns.
Yeah.
Logistically and safety and all that.
And just, this, this meeting is being recorded as well.
Mm-hmm.
It may be beneficial for them to see.
Okay.
This meeting and I think it'll be posted within usually 36 hours.
Thirty-six, 48 hours.
And it will be on our website.
On your website, okay.
And I'm sure that the, the link will be available and you may want to have that as a pre.
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll use that part of my presentation, you know?
So that way you don't have to try to regurgitate.
Right, right.
All of the concerns that came up this evening, especially when it comes to the, the mortgage and the bank concerns and, you know, and some of the more technical stuff, so.
And to show where, you know, we're wrestling with certainly the, the residents' desire, but also, you know, we've got to be consistent and take into consideration the town's concerns too.
And then, and then, you know, I'm sure it's probably on their radar screen, but the cost, there is going to be at least some cost associated with the road by taking out some brick and then fixing that, that'll be born, that would be borne by the association. And then if we get in and camera the storm sewers and find any problems or issues, that'll be the responsibility of the, the association to fix and have our engineering office certify that, then it would be appropriate to accept, so.
If some other structures, not to interrupt you, but they have like an entrance tower that's in our right of way, we wouldn't allow that, so that would have to come down. There's some full-looking bridge abutments, they would probably either have to be removed or relocated.
Yeah.
So some of the character of the neighborhood is going to change and what they like about it.
They might not want.
Picketing, whatever, and the brick pavers in the bridge, but that entrance tower that kind of welcomes you to it is.
Very good point, the visual aspect, because.
That's in the right of way, that would need to be removed to plow snow and taken out of the way.
If we recall back to when you first came to us, you know, to, I guess to take back to the, to the homeowners and say, is this going to really solve the problem you had at the beginning, which I think was with the plow contractor?
Right.
You know, is, is this the type of wholesale change you really wanted to buy into and pay for? Is that really going to solve, is that the best way to solve the problem you had in the, in the beginning?
I got a feeling I know the answer.
Well, certainly if you stay in contact, Mark, with, with Mark Valentine.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll show it as a held item and bring it back, actually as, we'll hold it from this meeting obviously, but bring it back for an action item at our next meeting on the, on the 27th.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll use, I'll probably use that video and it sort of explains it all while we haven't to try to explain it, you know?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Okay, we have nothing under public safety or community services for action items. We'll go to information items under lawn finance, update of applications for condition of use permits in the four corners. Mr. Costello, I think you've got three or four items to share with us.
Yeah, I just want to bring the board's attention to the focus. There will be some applications coming before you fairly quickly. One is where the owl barn was over there around Bury site, there's a gentleman that would like to come in and get an approval. He is, it's called a catalog shop, but what he really does is he's got these old globes that you used to put on the gas station pumps and he sells those, but he does, you know, certain types of wording and all that type of thing on it.
Like the SO one?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. He's got a company that he works with.
Well, before my time, I think I saw him in a museum somewhere.
So he'll be coming in, I've got a resolution going in. These meetings are not going to happen until February, but I've got a resolution going in for him.
What's the address of that one, Gus?
1807.
1807, right?
The little red barn in the back. The little red star in the back. And then we have Cindy Corrigan who's purchasing the Masonic Lodge. She's going to be coming in to ask for a permit for her art shop and lessons and that type of thing. So we'll get her in. There's also at a later date, some point in time, probably later in February or March, Joey's Pasta House wants to add an addition. They're in the process right now of preparing some mapping. A portion of that project will entail the relocation of the existing driveway further to the east. One is a one-in and the other one's a one-out, so they're trying to maintain that through traffic for both properties. So they're in the preparation stage right now of a map. As soon as I get that, I'll bring that in for a review, and then we'll get them in for an application as well. So that's what I have for the time being.
Did you hit the fitness center, 1802?
Well, it turns out Tony is referring to a young lady who's going to take over the old mathnasium at 1802 Penfield Road behind Tucantares. They're having some issues with the recent arrangement. She's now looking at two other locations, so I'm not going to bring that to your attention until I find out what she's truly going to do.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Questions for Cos?
No.
All right, this brings us to the end of the agenda. We did have one piece of information that came to light after the agenda was finalized, and that's under held items, and that's the right-of-way transfer at Mott's Lane and Jim.
Sidewalk house.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Good point. Sorry, 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 sorry. I was, I was looking ahead to a highlighted area. I apologize. I apologize because I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure I didn't miss that, so we'll back to informational items on our Public Works sidewalk policy review, and I'd ask that we put this on the agenda. One of the items that we have outstanding is, that's tabled from previous meeting, and that's the sidewalk waiver at 1445 Jackson Road. The discussion that the board had was, you know, the size, you know, in some instances you might have small frontage and it opens up into a very large parcel, and someone may pay $500 currently as our waiver fee. It may cover a 60-foot. Somebody may then also have 1,000 feet on the road and they still pay the same, you know, $500 for that. And so we had tabled this pending, pending, trying to make sure that we're being fair and equitable across the board, and I wanted to just heat us back up to get kind of a sense from the board and Mr. Valentine, if, or Costello, if you have anything else.
I just passed out, that actually shows the parcel 1445 Jackson Road we were talking about. That's the one that's currently pending. It's the open farm field at the top of the page. The one right below it is the Waybridge D'Angelo subdivision, which the board recently granted a partial waiver for, was the installation of sidewalks on the frontage and then a waiver of the internal piece, which was $500 a lot. As recently as today, PRC was discussing this and looking at different options. See, currently today, our waiver policy is $500 per lot for the waiver. We were talking more of, you know, currently today, the county bid price is $36.75 per lineal foot of a five-foot wide sidewalk. So we were looking at, you know, something more for the board to consider, and, you know, don't have anything formal to propose tonight, but just talking is, would you look at something that's half the cost of installation? So the 1445 Jackson Road is 668 feet at $36.75, works out to about $24,500 if they were to install it, you know, if there was, if the waiver was, doesn't meet our town plan, it's not tying in with that, you know, would you look at something that's half the cost of that, so it'd be more in the $12,000 range, you know, for that, and then I could go back and then.
And using the county bid as the standard.
As the standard. They bid it out every year, so we could just apply the policy saying it meets whatever the current county bid price is of what we pay. So I quickly ran the numbers for the 1445. I'd say they'd end up at $12,000 instead of $24,000 of installation. The D'Angelo property has 400, or excuse me, 530 feet of frontage, and that's the lower piece, and I just printed this one map because I kind of had both of them on at the same time. Works out to about $19,000 of cost for what he installed on the frontage. If he was doing the internal, he had about 1,500 feet of internal, doing both sides, full compliance with the policy, would have ran him another $57,000. In lieu of that, in our current rate, he paid for 11 lot waiver, which was $500 a lot to $5,500. So basically he paid the $19,000 for the installation at the front, which was $24,000. Full compliance would be $76,000, half that would be 38, so I don't know if that was more of a balance or how. Something we were just kicking around as much as today is something we could link and tie to.
When you're reviewing this, are you reviewing it in the sense of it's a developer looking to subdivide or a private resident? Because we've looked at a couple of sidewalk waivers out in East Penfield where for an individual homeowner, it could be significantly more than $500 even though.
Right.
They have no interest at all in subdividing.
And that's what we're looking at with 1445. The bigger piece on the north end is a single-family home lot that's being constructed right now. It's a large lot, 668 feet wide. Compliance would be basically a $24,000 installation of sidewalk. We have a developer on the south side that subdivided into 11 lots, and our current policy, he installed sidewalks at $19,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, so 1445 is for a one single.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought there was.
That's what kind of queued it up with these two right next to each other is, that's kind of the very issue, is the developer on the south end developed 11 lots, put in his piece in the front, paid a sidewalk waiver fee, and he's paying the same amount as the single-family homeowner to the north would be paying if we say full compliance. So I think we're somewhere between full compliance and $500 a lot, I think is a dated number. I mean, that was, that's been here as long as I've been, you know, with the town, so.
Almost becomes arbitrary.
And that's why I don't know if there was something more to tie it to, you know, the county bids outside walks every year, as they bid roads and everything else.
So you get a fresh number every year.
You could tie it to, that is a current number for construction costs and then, you know, back into a formula from that, saying, okay, current construction cost would cost you X. A waiver is a third of X or some number. I say I didn't have a formal proposal for the board tonight, but just seeing on the agenda.
So if we keep, if we keep this on the agenda, you two feel comfortable that the PRC could bring forth at least a straw man for us to take a look at?
We can formulate something for the board to look at ahead of it.
Or adjust it or agree to it or make whatever appropriate modifications.
We did talk about that today, Tony, to give you something to review.
Okay.
It does give that person the option. I mean, if they want to put the sidewalks in for $24,000, that's their right, but if they don't, at least, you know, they're getting half off and the town's getting something that they can use as a viable number to develop other places.
And I say half was just the number we threw out there today. I mean, maybe it's a quarter, a third, something, but at least if you.
And is this, I mean, I guess I'm trying to, but it's based on, remind me again what triggers the sidewalk necessity? How is this currently zoned? What do they want to do? Just put one house on there? So by purchasing it, is it currently zoned residential?
Yes.
So by purchasing it and wanting to put a home on it, then there's an automatic sidewalk requirement?
New construction.
Now, what if it wasn't on Jackson Road?
It doesn't matter.
Our policy's.
Okay, so, so.
Any new site plan approval?
Any new site plan.
Any new site plan approval? Okay.
And it actually makes it more equitable because now he may say, look, I can, you know, I can give you $12,000 versus having to put in $24,000. By the same token, we're not going to take $500 for 668 feet of sidewalk at this point in time. I mean, we're at a loss every time we do that.
Yeah, definitely seems somewhat outdated at the very least.
It's totally.
And I say, I mean, you could bump it up to 1,000 or 2,000, but again, I think then that's a kind of a stagnant number.
The correlation is.
That's why I just looked at equate it to construct current construction costs and then if we could adjust.
Having a formula.
How that factors off of that and then it automatically updates.
Across the board, so, okay. So we'll leave it, we'll leave it on the agenda. It'll come back up on the 27th, and, you know, PRC can take, and again, you know, we would welcome any thoughts or ideas, so as you continue to flush that out, and certainly how you got to whatever your number is, whatever that, you know, proposal is, the board can say, okay, you know, looks good, we need to be more aggressive, less aggressive, whatever that is, and then, you know, update our current, current policy, which is probably 15 or more years old, so, okay.
Great.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you, Rob, for making sure I didn't miss that one altogether. So we'll get down to held items and the information that is new from preparation of the agenda is a right-of-way transfer at Mott's Lane, and Jim may even give us an update, which may then give us the ability to possibly drop this off the agenda.
I would be happy to, Tony. As you know, Mr. Pitt and Arrow purchased the property immediately to the west of Mott's Lane as it comes out back into Penfield Road. His intent initially was to come to us and ask you for the ability to trade property where we would give him a portion of the right-of-way that comes out to Penfield Road because it's much larger than what we need. In lieu of that, he would then give us land behind his property so that we could continue Mott's Lane on down if the property's developed. Obviously, a developer would come in and do that, but if we had the right to, we would have the right to do it if we felt it was necessary to do that and continue it on down the hill. Up until last week, we thought we'd gotten to a point, Mike O'Connor in Mark's office had devised a method by which we could actually have an even trade in terms of square footage for both parcels. He came back to us and indicated that he wasn't interested in doing that because he would still lose some property in the back because of the amount that would have to be taken in order for us to make it a quick proposal versus having to go out to get an appraisal done and then go through the process of determining how much it was going to cost. So he's decided at this point in time to ask you not to go through that process with him. At some point in time, if somebody comes in and wants to do that as a developer, he would probably send them in to talk to us about doing that. So at this point in time, he's asked to be, you know, taken off the agenda and not pursue the application.
Okay. So we will, we'll take that off the agenda, okay? That brings us to the end. No old business, no new business. We do have a short executive session, talk about a couple of personnel items and litigation. So the meeting will stand adjourned at 8:47 PM. Thank you.